Good evening. I'd like to reconvene the final budget hearing and business meeting of May 3rd, I can't believe it's May, of 2022. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I'm trapped in my sweatshirt. So the treasures report for March 2022 is available in the business office. I would like to open it up to public comments on any of the listed agenda items. I don't see any public commenting, so I'd like to move to the consent agenda. Item one, please.
Barbara, you're gonna read it? Barbara? Oh, I'm sorry. You can do it.
Yeah, because it never changes, doesn't it? Resolved on the recommendation to attend schools to approve items two through five as appears on the consent agenda section of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? Mrs. Bellino?
Tonight's consent agenda items are to approve the minutes of the last board meetings, to appoint the workers and the chairperson for the May 17, 2022 budget for the end of this week vote. Laura Farley has offered to be the chairperson for the vote, and Renee's approving that resolution. Approve additional work hours for some staff members. Approve a volunteer for the modified baseball program by the name of William Fettetta. That's it.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we'd like to begin our presentations. We're excited to have a presentation tonight from the BOSI's, Putnam Northern Westers BOSI's Career and Technical Education Center. I'd like to welcome Catherine Ballastiri. Did I say that right?
Yes.
Oh, yay. To the microphone.
Good evening. Thank you for providing me with the opportunity to share information about PNW BOSI's career and technical education, our programs, enrollments, the regular ongoing comprehensive process that takes place to mature rigor and accountability, as well as to give you an overview of future-oriented CTE programs. Our mission at CTE is to prepare students for success in college or direct entry into a career. Eighty-five percent of our students go on to post-secondary, fifteen percent gain employment. We are passionate about CTE and pride ourselves on being innovative, creative, and cutting-edge with the programs that we offer and with the opportunities that we provide students with to meet with success and to find their passion. Why come to the tech center? You could learn a trade. All of our teachers are experts in their fields. They come from business industry. You can gain skills, certifications, work-based learning experiences, including internships, join a nationally-recognized student organization like Skills USA or National Technical Honor Society, gain a technical endorsement on your high school diploma. That's a seal that's affixed to your high school diploma showing that you passed a technical assessment. Hands-on approach to learning, very much project-based. Gain college credit. Some of our programs, you can gain upwards of eighteen college credits. Gain high school academic credit. Depending on the program, you can get English twelve, math, social studies, art, health, P.E., science. Gain experience to add to your resume. Complete a very comprehensive, program-specific employability profile. That profile follows the student over the time that they're with us, and as the teacher identifies that the student has completed a skill, whether it be a technical skill, an academic skill, a soft skill, a work-based learning experience, or an internship, that is noted on that individual student's employability profile. So, we offer CTE programs to meet the needs of all students. Our programs are diverse, inclusive, and ensure equity with the instruction and supports that we provide. All of our CTE programs are divided into career academies, and you see them listed on the left. Within each of those academies, there are programs for each of the different categories that you see up there. So, we have our honors programs, things like New Visions, which engineering and health. We have our two-year, two-hour program, our English New Language Learner Program, our Core Behavior Program. Those programs are capped at about twelve students because we really want those students to get that hands-on experience. Life Special Needs Programs, those are capped at eight. Those students, we're preparing them for the workforce, so we want to get them those skills. And then we have our GED program. A student must enroll if they're, if they meet a nine-point-oh in math and reading, then they can enroll in the GED program. They also have to take a trade program at the same time. So if you look on the right, I did a count of the number of sessions that we have. So what happens is we have some students who come to us for two sessions, some come for three. We total up all those sessions, and right now, we probably have over twelve hundred individual students. Sessions altogether are close to fifteen hundred. We have CTE programs there for seventh and tenth grade students. We also run our summer camps for twelve-to-fifteen-year-old students. All right, so right there, you're gonna see a list of, oh, I hope you can see that, all the different programs. We're not the BOSI's of old, so we have, we are really on it with all the new and emerging trends and fields that we need to be able to train our students for. So if you look at all those different academies, you're gonna see within them the types of programs. All those programs have different certifications attached, different internships attached. Most of our construction trades, those students can go and get their OSHA-ten card. Many of them can get an OSHA-thirty card, which is something you have to have if you're gonna work in New York City. In our English New Learner, English New Learner Academy, you're gonna see a lot of programs there. What happened was many years ago, we found students were arriving in this country, they were fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years of age, and the districts didn't know what to do. So what they did was they sent, because the kids would never be able to fulfill the requirements to be able to graduate from high school. So they sent us, them to us, and we provide full-day programming. So a student can come to us, they can take a bilingual trade, they can take an immersion, English immersion, we have multiple levels, and they can also take the Spanish GED or Spanish pre-DGED. So when they leave us, at least they have something. They have a skill, they have a little English, and hopefully have, they have that credential of having the, the GED. So, as I said before, did I skip over? I'm sorry. Just go back. Okay. So, talking about rigor and accountability. So with all of our programs, we have to complete an approval application with New York State, and every five years, we have to do a reapproval application. And it is quite a comprehensive process. You can see up there on the screen, all of the different things that we have to go through to get approval. We have to look at our data, we have to have a self-study team, we have to look at the program content. We actually bring in content specialists, English teachers, math teachers, social studies teachers, several from each of our component districts. And what they do is they look at the trade curriculum, and they map it to English, math, whatever the content would be. So most of our students are enrolled in those two-year, two-hour programs. So, the next is New York State did a survey for all of the business and industry partners. And what they did, if you look at that, they got, sent it out to two-hundred-and-sixty-five people. So on the chart, chart, on the top there, it asks, how can a provider ensure alignment of programs with labor market needs? As you can see, the highest percentage under incredibly useful is working with local business and industry. Next, we'd be working with our chambers and with the Regional Economic Development Councils. The chart on the lower left asks what level of academic skill for an entry-level job. Majority indicate they want the kids to have a high school diploma. Lower right, what kind of technical skills for entry-level job? Majority indicate limited skill. We hear regularly that if our students have the soft skills, an introductory knowledge to the trade, that they will hire them and train them further. And then highlighted on the bottom, out of one-hundred-and-fifty who responded, one-hundred emphasized the importance of soft skills. And you know what soft skills are, showing up on time, dressing appropriately, working collaboratively, being respectful, all of those different things. So, we did our own survey, our tech center. So we surveyed, surveyed two-hundred-and-five, we got two-hundred-and-five responses back. And basically, the responses we got were eighty-seven percent met or exceeded the expectations from those people that we placed them on internships with. So, work-based learning experiences, and especially internships for seniors, are a critical component of every CTE program. So we have three certified work-based learning coordinators who work to connect and expand our partnerships, and work-based learning experiences for all of the students. These are examples of some of the programs where Putnam Valley students have participated in internships. Next, some Putnam Valley CTE student success stories. So, we have Megan Hoyt, and I'm not gonna read it to you, but she had a great experience in the veterinary science program, and now she is going on to Morrisville for equine science and management program. We have Kelsey Murphy, who was in our division's health at Northern Westchester Hospital. She's en route to becoming a physician's assistant. We have Liam O'Leary, who graduated from our construction electricity program, who now is with the IBEW Local Three Apprenticeship on his way to becoming a journeyman. And so many more students who've met with success by going through each of those different programs. So we have a database, and the database is called College Central Network. I think we're one of the only ones in New York State on a high school level who use this. So basically, it's a way to get information from all of our business and industry partners and put it in one location. And then we get the information from our students, we get their resume and cover letter, and we also have graduate information. And we try to make matches between students and employers. So the goal is to match them with skilled workers. I'm recalled constantly by businesses looking to hire our students because they know, they've been trained, they have the skill. Right now, we have over five hundred partners, business partners, in that CCN. These are just a few of the logos that I put up there. One of the things that they've also done is so far since September, our partners have donated over ten thousand dollars in cash towards our student fund. They've also significantly donated supplies, equipment, and scholarships for our students to be able to go further with their training. We belong to every organization imaginable. I'm not gonna give you the long laundry list of acronyms. One of the big ones is NIOTAP, which is the New York State Association in Training and Employment Professionals. And they're the ones who come out with regular labor market, state-of-the-state analysis of, in terms of what jobs are in the near future. So one of the hot ones you're talking about is Clean Energy. So with Clean Energy, we're focused on those, that is one of the programs that we're gonna be focused on, in, on as we go, as we go forward. So, one of the other things they said was that of the ten largest occupations, only one requires a high school diploma. Eighty-five percent of our students go on to post-secondary for additional training. Even the kids in the automotive program, you know, everything is technology. Many of them go on to Morrisville and Delhi. They really need to be able to get, get more than just what they've gotten at our tech center. So now, I'm going to share with you some of the programs that we're working on for the future. These are gonna roll out in September. We've worked very closely with our local business and industry partners, with the Regional Economic Development Council, with our chambers and rotaries, in analyzing New York State Department of Labor Market data. So we've identified CTE programs of the future. With this horizontal directional drilling, our main partner is Vermeer, and this little clip will give you an idea of what horizontal directional drilling is. Let's see if I can do this.
My name's Paul Cranny. I'm a HTD specialist here at Vermeer. I basically train our customers to go out in the field and feel the point of point of need for bringing a customer out. The first thing to do is they'll probably go through the safety part of the job site of the utilities, walk on the floor path, and take it for interference. Then once we get that figured out, we get a plan, then we'll actually go through the functions of the drill. We'll walk around on the drill, show them all the rare items, all the recent links, and the functions of the drill. Once we're done with that, they will do have the locator, go through all the functions of the locator, and then we'll walk the floor path, turn the turns, go back, and we'll pick up frequencies on the train moving, and then we'll load it in the housing, and then we start our work.
Okay, so with this program, Vermeer has actually donated a simulator, an HDD simulator for our students to learn on. And if you're familiar with our campus, we have a huge farm field. So they have actually come and walked it just to see if we can train our students up there in their farm field. With that piece of equipment, everybody's gonna be using it, the municipalities, order departments, everybody. It's the kind of thing that, you know, if you had to run a pipe under this floor, instead of digging up your entire floor, you would go down over here, and it would guide you beneath the floor, and you'd come up way down there. It prevents you having to dig everything up. So it's a really, really cool technology. The next one, the next future program that we're gonna be looking at, that we're working on, is called Utility Field Technician. So we are partnering with USIC, United States Infrastructure Corporation. So what this does is, nobody can dig until they come in to say it's okay to dig. All right? So it really goes well with the HDD. So they will make sure, you know, identify where the gas lines are, the water lines are, everything is, before anybody even breaks ground on something. So this is a new, another new program for us. We employ over eighty-five hundred people, of which seventy-five hundred are field technicians. USIC provides a robust benefit package to employees that includes health and wellness, mental vision, and four-month pay. An ideal candidate for technician in USIC is somebody that can work independently, that likes to work outdoors, and likes to solve puzzles. We serve to promote women in our organization to have a career path for all employees, from technicians to leadership. I am an example of that promotion from within, as I went from a dispatcher and now a community resources to the organization. Okay. We don't need to see this video, sorry. It's next.
At USIC.
So next program is Diesel Technician. So we are introducing this into our small engine program. We purchased a diesel diagnostic trainer. We're gonna utilize our existing equipment. We have a Kubota, we have a Skid steer. Tompkins Escavating has brought their excavator onto our campus for kids to be able to use it. So this is another technology that we feel can really benefit our students in terms of looking to get jobs. Next one, which we're really excited about, is our Hybrid Electric Vehicle Technician. So research is way underway with this. We've met with all the area auto dealerships. You know, they're telling us by, you know, twenty thirty, you're not gonna be able to buy a regular car, everything is gonna be electric. So they have to have skilled workers to be able to work on these cars. And it's all about the software. It's not about the hardware, right? It's, it's learning the different software that Ford uses, that Tesla uses, that GM uses. So Ford has actually been good enough to have one of our teachers join them as they work through the EV curriculum. So we're gonna have this on our campus. We're reaching out to Tesla, we're hoping that they would be able to partner with us because even the community colleges, this is something that's really cutting-edge for them as well. And our hope is, you know, we always want to provide programs that kids can go on to the next step into post-secondary to get more training. So we're very excited. We have the people in place with the skill set to be able to move this initiative forward. Heavy equipment. So we're purchasing lots of big pieces of equipment to train our students on. Our urban forestry program is known both statewide and nationally. It's been recognized. We're working with partners like Vermeer, Westchester Tractor, Danelli. They're looking to hire our students, and they're saying they'd like the students to have the OSHA certification. They want our students to be trained on these heavy pieces of equipment. These companies are really eager to donate equipment to us to train the kids, and then they take it back, I guess they take a depreciation on the equipment, and then they give us another new piece of equipment. So it's a great opportunity for our students to learn on the latest, greatest equipment that is out there. Clean energy, again, you know, we have a lot going on with solar, wind, and with geothermal. There's a company called Dandelion, I think it's out of Mount Kysko, they just called us last week, and they said they're looking for six to eight graduates of our HVAC program that they would like to train in residential geothermal. So that's a whole nother area that we're exploring and we're looking to move into. And then lastly, just some information, we have our summer camps for middle school students. Every summer, we've run weekly camps during the month of July, nine to one, usually have over three hundred students over the course of the summer who take part. A lot of parents will sign their kids up for maybe a week of culinary, and then maybe a week of welding. So it's, it's, they just wanna give their kids a flavor, a taste of all the different things that are out there. One of the things I remember is we had a student in our fashion design program, she was a senior who was graduating, going off to FIT. And she said, you know, I always loved fashion. And she goes, what really set it for me was when I was in middle school, I took the summer camp for fashion, and it convinced me, this is the path I wanna go on. And she proceeded to take out of her bag a ratty little pair of pajama bottoms that she had made when she was a middle schooler in summer camp, and a little bag, because these are little projects that they work on. So we have a lot of kids who started out in summer camp, who've come on and come to the tech center for a similar type of a career pathway, and then have gone on to college. We have one of your students, I think his name is Nat Molnar, who graduated, I think, last year from the architecture program, who he is moving on to college to study, study the same thing. And then very lastly, I'm sorry, is just our recognition ceremony will be coming up in June. We will be recognizing this June, over six hundred students who have completed programs at our tech center. So we're very, very excited and are looking forward to that. Our enrollment so far, I always monitor week by week, what are we looking like in terms of enrollments coming in for September? We're up almost twenty percent. It's just been absolutely amazing. I think people really are recognizing the benefit of having their student learn a skill. The construction trades, the transportation trades, you name a trade, they're clamoring for workers because their workforce has aged out, and they're looking to be able to backfill. And we're providing those skills for those students. So thank you again. That's a lot of information. It can be a little bit overwhelming. I've lived it forever, so I just get it. But, but thank you. So any questions?
Well, just, out of curiosity, in all of these academies, is the breakdown of males and females about the same? I mean, I know a lot of them are traditionally male roles, but I know that women are going into those fields, and I just wondered how that...
That's a really great question. So one of the things that the state always looks at when they look at our data is students enrolled in non-traditional fields. So to your point, you know, typically you have males in construction, you have females in the health. It's shifting, we're getting more females into construction and transportation, and one of the things that we're doing, we will be doing next year, you know, we look for ideas. How do we get more females involved in the construction trades? How do we get more females involved in the transportation trade? So one of the things we're doing is we're gonna be holding females in the construction industry, and we're going to be having people who work, females who work in particular roles in that industry, set up stations so people can go around and see what the career is all about.
And then, like, high schools would be notified, and they would pass, the guidance office would pass that along to students?
Sure. We have a great relationship with your, your school counseling office, great relationship with Natalie Darty. I mean, I think the communication, we're sure to make sure that you get that information for all our events.
Are there specific enrollment requirements for some of these courses or some of these programs?
So that's a good question. So going back to one of the beginning slides, we have programs for every profile of student. The programs are incredibly rigorous with a lot of college credit. So our goal is for a student to be successful. I don't want a student to enroll in a program where they're, they're not able to be successful. Though we do use grant funds to buy supports, we have curriculum software that we've purchased to be able to further support them in their learning. So to that point, we will look at the profile of students, we have conversations with students, our counselors talk to your counselors, and we, if there's one, a student who's questionable, could the student be, could they be successful and pass the assessment? Everybody thinks cosmetology is so easy. Cosmetology is probably a lot harder than programs. I mean, it's heavy science, there's the boards they have to take, it's a thousand-hour program. So just because, it's not just working with hair. So it's, you know, getting through a very, very tough curriculum. So we'll talk to your counselor, and we will give a kid a shot if we think they might be able to do it. We don't like to turn anybody away. I mean, there was a district, we did vet science, and at the time, we didn't have animal care. And animal care was really for a child with, with, you know, special needs. And a district said, you know, did you ever think about doing an animal care program? Great suggestion. We now have two animal care programs for students with special needs, one up at Tilly-Foster Farm and one on our main campus, and enrollment is full in both. So any suggestions you have for programs that we have not thought of, we're all ears.
Great, thank you. You had mentioned, like, some of the, you might have just answered my question, some of the cutoffs, I should say, eight students per a program. Do you have multiple classes at that program, or are you only bringing in eight people for that?
So it depends on the program. So for example, culinary is a real big one for students with special needs and for core students, students with behavior problems. So what we find is if there's a need, then we will add additional sections. So what you're gonna see is up at Tilly-Foster and Brewster, all those programs are, they're all for students with special needs or students with behavior. And the goal for those students to get, is to get them into internships and to get them to be able to transition into work. On our main campus, we have multiple sections for those students. We would not close a student out, we would, we would look to see if there would be enough need to be able to open an additional section.
Thank you. I have two more. Internships, are they required for seniors or voluntary? And are they paid?
So it's both. So we, as I had said, we have three work-based learning coordinators who work very, very hard to be able to secure those internships. So if we can get a junior on an internship, great, but our goal is to have every single one of our seniors have an opportunity for an internship. They sometimes will find it on their own, we sometimes, most times, try to find something within their community. We have, you know, our people are coming from business and industry, our teachers, and many of them still have a connection, many of them are still in the unions. So they have a lot of connections in the communities. So we don't really have great difficulty locating internships for kids, but it's, it's part of what we do. And I don't wanna say it's mandatory, we don't really say mandatory, we say it's something that we wanna offer you, that we think can really better your opportunity to be successful as you go forward in, in the career, just to determine if it's the career that you really wanna do.
Great. And overall, for your seniors, do you have placement services once they complete the programs?
We have, so we have our work-based learning coordinators who run, it's the College and Career Center, where our College Center Network database is located. So what happens is they will go in there and they will sit, they will look to see what kind of job openings there are. Most of our kids are looking for jobs after school and on the weekends because they're all going off to college. In terms of, we do bring colleges in to help them, WCC comes in to help with the application process, but in terms of, we don't do anything related to college placement.
But those fifteen percent that aren't going to college, you assist with placement if requested?
We do. We do. So you know what, there are some programs that are, it's, the kids that graduate from urban forestry, I would say the vast majority of those kids are getting jobs right out of, right out of that program. It's, I was thinking of taking the program myself, and they make a very, very good salary graduating from that program. I mean, we had a kid who graduated making a really high salary, and he got a... I mean, we had a kid who graduated making a really high salary and he got a down county, I think it was the Westchester County Parks, and in a very short time, because of the skills that he had learned, they promoted him to Foreman. This is a kid who's, you know, not even 20 years old, so.
Thank you, very informative.
You're welcome.
So thank you again for coming. Very impressive. I have some ideas for my own two boys as to some of the careers that they should go into. Yeah. I like that horizontal drilling thing, that's cool. But actually, one last question for you. I'm curious, I know as a school district, we struggle to figure out scheduling for students and we want, we don't want to be the roadblock for any students to pursue any of these. I was just curious as to how the decisions are made regarding graduation requirements that you're able to provide versus those that have to be provided at the school, right? So obviously for our high school schedule, if a student goes to postseason the afternoon, we have to really fill their morning with prerequisite courses to ensure that they graduate. And I think over the years, postseason used to provide more of those credits. Is that, I don't know if that's something that's locally determined or if that's something that comes from the state or if you could just speak more to that?
Yeah, so what happened back, oh gosh, when new regulations came back, came out back in the day and what happened was state had realized that if we didn't do something for CTE, no kid would be able to come, right? Because they had to get their English, their math and so on. So they came up with that program approval process, which I kind of explained in the beginning. So what happens is if a student comes to, juniors typically come 12 to two, seniors typically come from eight to 10. Over the course of the two years, we have in every one of our 24 program-approved programs, students can get their English 12 credit. Students in majority of programs can also get a math credit over the two years. The additional credits that they can get, and it's more of a pullout, they can get their art credit, they can get their health credit, they can get their PE credit. If they come to us for four hours as a senior, they can get their social studies credit as well. So it really is up to the district how many credits they want to take with us. It doesn't change the cost whatsoever in sending a student to us. It's just in terms of what the student needs to be able to fulfill your requirements and what it is that we have to offer. One of the things that we found was many of the districts were going to a common lunch hour, which was knocking kids out of coming session two. We worked with those districts, you know, what are the programs that you'd like to see first and second? We were flexible because we don't want to prevent a kid from having the opportunity of coming to us. Hope that answered your question.
No, it's, it's great. And I understand you, obviously, you're trying to coordinate the schedule with at least 18 school districts. So it's very complicated, but nobody wants to stand in the way of allowing students to pursue any of these, so. Mark, you're breaking the rules.
Diane, I just wanted to say that Nate Molnar built the outdoor stage at Townes-Corris Cultural and Urban Rescue.
Oh, very nice. It's your public service announcement. Thank you.
Good, let her bring him up there. Yeah, great, okay.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and now not as fun, our final budget presentation. Not as fun as that sideways drill.
You don't get access, Dr. Love, sorry.
Are you starting with Jill?
Good evening, everyone. So Jill and I are going to go through our budget presentation one final time. So we're going to go through an abbreviated version, but if there's any questions, please feel free to stop us and we can certainly elaborate on that specific slide. So as always, our budget is built around our district goals and as we've shared before, our district goal this year is to reflect on our struggles, identify some victories along the way, capitalize on our lessons learned, and to really focus on thriving, moving forward. There are many variables that go into the development of our budget and this slide is meant to represent some of the many. The keynote here is ensuring that enhancing the student experience programs and opportunities is at the center of all of these sort of competing variables that we have to consider when planning our school budget. We've really made a concerted effort this year to ensure that a budget development process is transparent to the community. We've held many budget discussion sessions and I've actually been very pleased in the turnout for many of those sessions. It's really important to us to make sure that the community has accurate information that they need to make an informed decision when it comes time to vote on our school budget. We've had lots of conversations around voter turnout and we hope that an empowered, engaged, knowledgeable community member will be a voting community member. This is our review of our enrollment. So we continue to see attrition of our high school seniors exceeding our incoming enrollment of our elementary school students, but after this year, we start to see a significant leveling off. And as mentioned before, we've seen an influx in the number of students enrolling into our school in grades other than kindergarten over the past several years. So we really see our enrollment leveling out and possibly beginning to go back up as we monitor the size of our incoming kindergarten classes. This year's budget is really built around maintaining many of the programs initiatives that we know are beneficial for our students. Our students have really struggled over the past several years despite all of the great work that's happened here in Putnam Valley. We want to make sure that we continue to provide our students with all the programs, initiatives, and supports that they need to be successful moving forward. So this slide captures many of those programs. Regarding staffing, we've spoken at length regarding the addition of three elementary school classroom teachers. This is meant to reduce class size. Smaller class sizes should provide our teachers the ability to address some of the learning loss over the past several years. One elementary class size, or one elementary position, we anticipate being required moving forward and that's just looking at our long-range projections of enrollments coming up. And two of those are being funded by federal stimulus funds. When those federal stimulus funds are gone, then it's an opportunity for the district to reevaluate whether those are positions that enrollment dictates us carrying forward or whether those are positions that will then be eliminated. Just important to note, if the decision is made to maintain those positions, that it will come at the expense of something else. We will not be able just to continue to add staffing without exceeding the tax levy. So in the event that those decisions are deemed necessary, there would be sort of an offsetting reduction somewhere else in the budget to make that possible. We've also, we're in the process of hiring a new special education teacher at our middle school. We've hired a new E&amp;L teacher this year already and they'll be continuing. A school nurse, our school nurses have been really heroes throughout the pandemic and we needed a way to provide them with some, some leave from their position. They haven't been taking lunches or breaks and they can't call in sick. So the extra school nurse has really been a huge addition to our school district and providing our school nurses with the ability to, to really do the work that needs to be done. We're looking to increase the number of teaching assistants and that's meant to, again, provide classroom teachers with additional support, which will directly impact our students. And we've spoken about the hiring of a Mandarin teacher who happens to be here this evening to replace what has been the hybrid instruction model of years past to an in-person learning model that we know is more impactful for students, that will be able to support our Mandarin students into the IB diploma program at the high school. So we're very excited in a short period of time, we will have the opportunity to read that resolution. Just some notes on the very bottom here. Obviously, we've increased some of our substitute rates of pay. We've seen a crisis in terms of being able to find daily subs who, and make sure we're competitive with neighboring districts. We did see a significant increase in our health insurance costs. We're still working to settle some of our contractual bargaining agreements and obviously we're obligated to fulfill the requirements and others. These are some of the many variables that relate to our staffing in this year's budget. As we've spoken about in the past, the federal stimulus funds make it possible for the district to do some capital improvements and this slide is meant to capture some of those capital improvements that are made possible because of the federal stimulus funds. Makes a lot of sense for us to spend those federal stimulus funds on improvements because it's really a one-time expenditure that offers a long-term return on its investment for our students. So new outdoor classroom space, bathroom renovations, air and water quality systems, refurbishing our modular building behind the elementary school so we don't lose that space, as well as a high school roof replacement are all part of our district's plans for the upcoming school year. And then some of the things I had mentioned regarding the capital budget. By being able to perform these projects using our reserves, our general fund and federal stimulus funds, it allows us to accomplish much-needed maintenance without going back out to the taxpayers and asking for additional funds to support these projects. So I think that's a huge piece of this budget despite all the other variables that we have to consider, despite the fact that inflation, although impacting the community members, also impacts us here at the school district and we're limited to what we're able to calculate regarding that. We're still able to accomplish many things and we're able to do maintenance that many districts would then, would otherwise require voter approval and additional bonding of money to make possible. So I'm very proud that we were able to come in with a budget as low as we have while still being able to accomplish some of our much-needed capital improvement work. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Figarilla.
Good evening. So, yep, we're going to go over where the money comes from and to pay for all these things in our budget. And right now, I'm going to review the revenues. So we, every year, you know, struggled to figure out, you know, how much state aid we're going to be getting. This year, we are seeing a return of a promise that was made many years ago in New York State. It's called Foundation Aid, which is a formula-based aid. It's now been restored to school districts across the state and we're going to see about a 3% increase in that state aid. It's a big number for us and it's coming at a time when we really need it and we needed to supplement the budget with all of the inflation that we're seeing and of course the tax cap restrictions that we have. So almost 25% of our, of our revenues are going to be coming from aid. Only 2% is coming from our small investments that we have, refunds and use of our debt reserve. And then 2.7% is coming in from other transfers we're going to be using from our reserves to pay for some of the capital costs that Dr. Love mentioned. And then of course, to make up the difference and to close that gap, to meet the budgetary needs, our school taxes, which is calculated using our tax cap calculation. These are the numbers that go with those percentages and for state aid, we're going to see about $13.8 million. And that again is about 25% of the revenues that we need to, to support the budget. The local revenues and resources include use of some of our debt service reserve. So that 1.5 million represents a million dollars coming from debt service reserve to pay for the work that we need to do on phase one of the roof repairs and replacement at the high school building. The other $520,000 is again from investments, refunds and prior year's expenses, other types of small local revenue that we are, you know, we are allowed to bill out for some tuitions and some student fees. The appropriated fund balance and operating fund reserves, that's 1.1 million we're bringing in from our general operating fund reserves to support some of the, the debt and capital expenses that we are going to incur this year. And the real property tax levy, of course, is our tax cap. It's, the levy is increasing at a very low percentage of 1.49%. The tax cap was calculated to be 1.62% based on our formula and we were able to get it down as low as 1.49. Our total budget being $55.8 million. These are the expenses that are on the other side of that equation, so this is what the money's being spent on. These are appropriations and for general support, that includes our district offices, our operations and maintenance, and our insurance needs. Insurance needs meaning like liability insurance on the buildings and grounds, not the other types of benefits that you would consider insurance. And that's $4.9 million. Our instructional costs, which is the largest part of our budget, is for all of our student needs and services, $29.6 million. That includes salaries for teachers and instructional staff. Transportation, we have $3.3 million. That's for our contracted services as well as our in-district services. We provide some of the transportation as well as our contractor. It pays for our fuel also and any expenses related to transportation. Benefits and debt service, that would be again, our principal and interest that we pay on our debt. And it is also including those capital expenditures that we are going to incur this year on those minor remodeling projects and also the roof repair at the high school. And this is just another way of, of looking at where the money goes. We see 43.7% of our budget going towards classroom instruction, 22%, about 22% going towards employee benefits, 9% towards debt service and capital transfers, about 6% towards transportation, five towards our support services. This would be like our occupational, all our therapists or nurses, nursing services and, and extra services like that that are not, they're instructional, but they're not considered in classroom instruction. This is, operations and maintenance is about almost 5% of our budget. 4% goes towards general and administrative support. 2.6 goes towards technology and media support and the remaining 2.4% towards co-curricular and athletics. Overall, our personnel costs in all of those percentages and the dollars are about 68.5%. This is required by the state. It's a, another way of looking at the budget. So about 74% of our budget goes towards instruction, 10% towards administration, and 16% towards capital expenditures. I just want to talk a few minutes about our property tax cap, tax cap calculation and what it is. And I also am happy to say that during our Q and A sessions, we had a lot of discussions about how this works and what it means and how people can understand it in layman's terms. I mean, it is, you know, it's not super complicated, but you know, it gets into the weeds about, you know, what it means to a district and how we're able, how our limitations are set on local share of taxes. So it determines the total amount of property taxes that a school district is allowed to collect from property owners in order to balance our budget. And it is an eight-step formula and it doesn't really mean that we're allowed to cap at 2%. It, it really means that 2% is part of the formula. And I know I've stepped through the formula before and I, I'm, I don't have those steps here with me tonight and, but there is a section here that if you went to, went to this, it would go through all the steps of the tax cap. So anybody who's looking at this online can certainly click into that and listen to that whole presentation on how that tax cap is calculated step by step. Again, our tax cap calculated out at 1.62%. The district is increasing by 1.49% in order to try to keep it under that cap and, and be cognizant of taxpayers and fiscal responsibility. So the total, and just to note, the total town's overall assessment and equalization rate is set by New York State and those things are not determined until July to be final. So if you, during the presentation, I know we talked about tax rate and we'll talk about assessments and I just, I want to stress that until we know that final information, we really can't... really can't, we can't present that in a definite, as a definite number. But what I do wanna say is that the value of your home, what it is now, even if it's, um, I wanna say it's everyone's home, as far as the assessor, the assess, the assessed value is concerned, is more or less proportionately the same as it was, it is every year. In other words, the assessor will have, hire an outside firm to come in and reassess to bring the values of the home up to what the market value is. I've been hearing this week, everyone's getting letters from that particular company that they've hired to do that work, and assessed values are going up about 10%. But they're going up 10% across the board, so that means that everybody's home is, in general, everyone's home, because there are homes that are doing construction or other types of projects that will change that value. But in general, everyone's home is going up proportionately the same, right? So their tax rate, the tax rate will will be lower because of it, but their assessment is going up, so it's, it's not going to change from what you were paying proportionately last year. In other words, the percentage of the tax, taxes that you were paying should remain the same. I hope I'm explaining that. You can understand. So again, 1.49% is what we're looking at for our increase in the levy. As I presented it, the tax rate is an estimate about $25.11 per $1,000 of assessment. That will probably go down if the 10% is correct, and I don't know what that that number is. Again, I won't know that until July, and if that is the case, the rate will drop. It's not going to mean a big change in your taxes, because, again, it's changing across the board for everybody the same. I've also gotten many questions about how are my taxes, you know, why are they higher than the town next door, or why? So untrue. Those taxes next door in the neighboring town, they're not less than what you pay in Putnam Valley for the same-priced home if your tax base is the same. So in other words, there may be things in Yorktown, in Lakeland, in Maia Park, that are commercial tax base, and that's going to slightly change what your proportion of taxes are as residents, but I feel that, you know, you're, if you're doing the correct comparison, you're gonna find that homes at the same value are are paying similar taxes in a neighboring town. This is our tax rate history over the last 10 years. Our tax rate is, again, more than likely going to be lower than it was 10 years ago. It is as calculated right now, so I expect that to even drop lower. And that's the history, if anybody is interested in that. Okay, so appropriations that are impacting our '22, '23 budget, let's go over some of those so we can summarize what is affecting our bottom line. We have salaries, we, we're gonna have, as far as salaries go, we have staff retirements, we have non-teaching and teaching retirements happening. That should net about a savings of $235,000. We have a general education teacher at the elementary school that we'll be hiring from through the budget. These costs are here, $75,000, an additional special education teacher at the middle school, a pre-K program that is completely state-funded. So any of the revenue that we have coming in for that pre-K program, you'll see in the budget, it's the same amount going out. So that is completely state-funded, $173,000. Contractual costs, that would be all of our bargaining unit contracts and costs associated with those, $450,000. Our teacher pension rates and our non-teaching pension rates are kind of offsetting each other this year, so one of the rates went up and one of the rates went down. The big ticket item this year in our budget, in addition to the inflation factor, is health insurance premiums. We're seeing an 8% increase in health insurance premiums. Other districts are seeing similar, well, there's 14 districts within our Putnam Northern Westchester Bozies that participate in the same health plan that we participate in as a school district. They are seeing 8% increases as well. Those districts don't experience different rate increases than we do, they're the same, if they participate in our plan. Most of the districts, I would say, south of here, and other districts, of course, all over the state, there are different health plans. The other districts in Putnam Northern, I think there's four that don't participate, they're in a separate plan, and there are other districts south of here, they're seeing 14, 18% increases. They're outside of our self-funded plan, because I'm getting that question from a lot of people, too. Why can't we shop around? Why can't we get better rates? We are getting very good rates. Our, our plan has great experience. It's maintained, you know, good, it's got a good fund balance, it's got good history. So I think that what we're able to provide for those 14 districts is is definitely a good plan, and it's, it's, it's not a very expensive plan, as some of these other ones are. It is a big number for our budget, it's $416,000. I don't expect that increase to go away for a couple of years. We're all experiencing backlash from COVID, expenses from, you know, new doctor visits, and of course, there's just the treatment of COVID itself. So until that goes away, which I have no idea when that will be, we're gonna be seeing some of those higher increases. We have tuitions that are out of district, a little bit higher this year than we, you know, had hoped, so we're gonna see an increase there of $250,000. We have some other contractual changes that are not associated with salaries, they're for vendors, technology, again, 8.5% inflation rate by the time we vote on this budget. That's a very conservative number, $100,000. I expect that number to climb, even though, you know, it is what it is, that's what we planned on in in January, February. We're gonna have to see how that goes and try to use as many efficiencies as we can throughout the year to try not to exceed that. We have, right now, it's the time to purchase our administration building, comes at a time when, again, inflation is high, but we have to do it, our five-year lease is up, we have nowhere else to be, we have explored other options, but they're more costly. So this is the best option that we have right now. The roof work, again, at the high school, phasing in one, Phase One and Two, we hope to be able to do more of that work, not until 2026, 27, 28. We're gonna have to see how it goes with the roof. Right now, we have some areas that really need tending to, so that will increase our budget by $1 million. Again, that money's coming from the reserves to support that, that work. The whole overall change in the budget is $2.6 million. So how do we get that? From the revenue side, we have an increase in state aid of $2.2 million. We have our tax levy of 1.49%, which is $578,000. We're using district reserves of $2.1 million. Last year, we used $2.3, and budget-to-budget change, again, $2.6 million. Okay, let's go over the federal stimulus. So this money is separate from the district budget, but it is tied in. So the two buckets or two amounts of money that we received as, well, we haven't received any of it, let me correct myself. We haven't received any of it. We've applied for it, we've been approved to receive it. The money will not come to the district until the money is spent. So we get to claim it after we spend it. So we have $1.3 million coming from a one grant that is earmarked to be spent by September of 2023, and we have another $1 million coming to the district, again, for an additional year until September of 2024. And how we're handling the expenditures in, in the way, I know Dr. Luft talked about being able to afford capital expenses because we're getting federal stimulus. It is incoming rate, the capital expenditures are built into our budget because the capital expenditures will be able to drive a 67% aid return for the district. It is best to handle it that way. We will not get additional building aid if we put those project costs into the federal stimulus grant. So we exchange expenses that are in our normal operating budget for capital expenditures so that we can maximize the aid. It makes sense, it makes us the most, gets us the most for our money. I just wanna say it that way, and if you have any questions about that, I can explain it further. So again, the applications were filed, they were reviewed, we received approval. Some of this information might be a little old. I believe I updated it, but no money's been received, and again, we'll be spending that money over the next two years, because we have to. So these are the changes that, these were, this is the money that was exchanged between, how I just explained it, between the capital expenses in the federal stimulus and the general operating budget. So you'll see $730,000 being exchanged between the two in order to make that all happen, and those are all of the the items we just talked about. So the, the school budget vote is, again, being held on Tuesday, May 17th. It's at our elementary school, it's between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM, and it's in the cafeteria there at the elementary school. Those phone numbers and information to contact those who can talk to you about the budget would be myself, Jill Figarilla, business official, and that's the phone number, and Maureen Bellino is our district clerk. She can help with any voting or absentee ballot information that you might need. And let's talk a few minutes about contingency budget. So the contingency budget is something that we don't ever wanna have to have, because it means eliminating programs and services in the long run. I mean, we, if we have a budget that gets voted down, there are a couple of choices that the board has to make, and one of them is to resubmit the same budget for a second vote, or submit a revised budget. If that budget should fail, we would have to adopt what is called a contingency budget, and it means removing $578,000 plus from the proposed budget. Some of the things that we would possibly have to remove are staffing positions and benefits, materials and supplies, reduce extracurricular activities, these are all things that would decimate programs and staff as we know it. Any equipment over $5,000 would have to be, would be prohibited, capital projects would have to be eliminated unless they, you know, addressed safety and health needs. And then, again, we'd have to revert to the prior year's tax levy. That is the most devastating part, in addition to the programs and services that would affect kids, because in the following year, it would affect children to $1.2 million, and that's, we would be starting off with a tax levy that is almost $600,000 less, less than the prior year. So not only would we be eliminating those appropriated expenses, we would have, we would be starting off with that much less the following year, already in the hole about $1.2 million. It would really devastate school programs. I just can't stress that enough. I want people to understand, it's not just a one-year, like, we're not passing the budget this year, and then next year we go back to normal. It doesn't work that way. Dr. Luft, do you wanna go over the the facts?
Sure.
You seem to explain them better than I do.
Jill, wait, before you, before you go.
Oh, sure, we can ask questions.
Just on the, on the last slide.
Yep.
Is the roof repair considered essential for health and safety? I mean, because the roof is leaking, right?
It would be my opinion that that would be a yes. I don't know how the state education department would view that. I'd have to ask that question outright. I don't think that I could answer that completely honest at this moment. Yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
And I have one more quick, I'm sorry, Jeremy, we don't wanna hear the facts.
I can stay here for one more.
This question is actually, I think, probably more Natalie than, Jill, and I feel like every time I see the budget, I see another point of it, I've looked at it several times, and then something else jumps out at me. I noticed that our out-of-district tuitions have gone up. I'm gonna venture, I guess, that that could be COVID-related as well, in terms of anxiety, social emotional issue.
Emotional, social emotional needs.
Because we have such a broad range, that's yet another kind of casualty.
Absolutely, and I think we've seen, really, many of our students struggling, but those with already having pre-existing conditions definitely see a heightened anxiety, depression, all of those things. So most of our out-of-district students, a lot of them have emotional disabilities.
And of course, it's an anticipated number.
Sure.
Those things can change, we could have more. So, you know, it can go either way.
Thank you.
Just to point out that the other side of the equation is also true, that we anticipate bringing in students who will pay tuition to attend our programs. So I know that's not captured on that same slide, but we do.
Oh, that's great.
Anticipate revenue coming in from students being placed in our programs as well. Can I go now?
Yes.
Maybe.
So the purpose of this slide is really to just sort of summarize many of the key talking points that we've already discussed throughout the other slides, and to really emphasize some points that we want community members to be able to easily take away. The first one really speaks to voter turnout and our hope that a greater percentage of the voting community comes out and lets their voices be heard, regardless of how they vote. I would love to have more than 9.1% of all eligible voters come out, and I would love to see more than 15% of parents of school-aged children coming out and voting. The second one speaks to the fact that this year's budget, as in every budget we've offered since the tax cap came about, it remains below that cap, and we hope to continue to do so for as long as possible. This represents a 1.49% increase, and as we've mentioned on several occasions, we're able to accomplish some really meaningful building maintenance work, and we're also dealing with the effects of 8% inflation, and despite those variables, we're still able to propose a budget that has a tax levy increase of 1.49%. This year's budget tax rate remains below the budget tax rates from the nine previous years, I'm sorry, from what it was nine years ago. So again, that shows, that just speaks to our fiscal conservancy. And as I mentioned in the slide I shared before, we're able to maintain our programs, initiatives, extracurricular activities, all of those things that our students, many have missed out on over the last several years. So we're really proud of being able to provide and continue to provide many of those same programs for our students within this year's budget. Thank you.
Are there any more, any more questions or comments?
I was gonna ask about the assessments, but you covered that, so thank you for doing that.
I have a question for Jeremy, though. The, two questions, so multi-year program, middle-year program, are we still exploring it, or are we committed to it?
So we are still in the exploration phase, although I anticipate by the first week in June, moving beyond that. So we have teachers that continue to sort of receive training, visit other schools, other sites, we have individuals come in to really provide all of our middle school teachers with enough information they need to make an informed decision as to whether or not this is the direction they want their building to move. I think the feedback so far has been extremely positive and continues to grow in that way. So it's something that I'm very hopeful that will gain the buy-in of the middle school and will be able to really focus on for the next couple of years.
Thank you. And I know you've mentioned this in all of the meetings, but can you just say it again, after the two years is over, those two elementary school positions, the potential of those staying or going, the future of those?
Yeah, I mean, I think at that time, the board has to make a decision whether to find another source of revenue to support those teachers, which would mean reducing an expenditure somewhere else, or whether those positions are something that were nice to have following a pandemic and, but are something that we could otherwise do without moving forward.
Thank you.
We may have retirements coming up and things like that, so trade-off.
All right. If, in the event that the positions themselves are eliminated, I'm very hopeful that the individuals in those positions will have the opportunity to move into other vacated positions through attrition or other means. So I'm very hopeful that the people stay, even if the positions were to be eliminated.
And I think school districts across the area are all experiencing similar situations where we're expected to, at this point with our influx of federal stimulus and whatnot, to improve or enhance programs to help kids. to improve or enhance programs to help kids come back from their learning loss. And I just, you know, this is, this is not just happening here where we're looking at possibly hiring people and letting people go. I mean, I think it's just something that we're all going through, so. Does anybody else have questions about the budget?
Until when can absentee ballots be requested, absentee ballots?
I always can't get the date straight.
For me to mail an absentee ballot to a voter, it has to be before May 10th. I'm not allowed to mail them after May 10th. But they can come to the office any day up till the day before the vote and do it all in person. But by mail, it has to be May 10th.
Thank you.
No, no, no.
May 10th for mail, for me to mail an absentee ballot.
They can return them.
The return of the ballot is due 5:00 PM the day of the vote.
May 17th. Jill, did you want to hold that up?
Yes, so this is a, this is a copy of our newsletter that's going out. It'll be going out tomorrow in the mail. I'm looking at Maureen, but she's not sending it out. It's going out through BOSIs. We had them partner with us this year to, it will look similar to the one that has been sent out recently and that is also available online. This one was also available online, obviously. This one's full of all of the information that we just reviewed, some nice pie charts and numbers on the inside. And yep, has a little bit different look than the one in the past, but basically the same. So just wanted to show that before it went out. And if anybody has any other questions.
I just want to say thank you. You could probably say all this in your sleep and you've said it many, many times.
You're welcome. I feel like by the time, the third time we repeat it, I don't know if I'm emphasizing a lot of things that people want to know. So that's why I would love for people to ask questions. And I want to thank everybody that's been asking questions and coming to those meetings and calling and, you know, just giving me some information, you know, giving me something to go with and, and know what people want to know. Because I think we have a good story to tell and I think that we're doing a good job at presenting the budget in a fiscally responsible way. And I want people to know that. We're doing the best we can for the best outcomes for the students.
I guess, what is the cost per student?
Sorry, if you just come up to the mic and introduce yourself if you ask a question?
I asked, what is the cost per student?
Sorry, you just have to introduce yourself first.
Hi, I'm Liz J. What is the cost per student according to this budget? I'm going to just show something because I bothered to put it together. It's only, it's a little link to something I wanted to show. Okay? So here, and yes, our cost per student is listed here and so are all the other districts in the area. Dan, do you know if I can make this bigger or probably not? Okay. So here's Putnam Valley here. And the answer to your question is that this is at $31,000 per student and that's based on 1,598 students. And that's all of our students district wide. It's not just general education students and it's not just special education students. So it is like, you know, a combination of all of those. That's per student. And here are the other districts around us and part of our BOSIs to give you an idea of what they're spending per student. So I could share that with you as well.
I can read it, so we all can.
Okay, okay. I can share that with you. Maybe you could just give me your email address and.
Oh, thanks, Brett. Will the residents do that?
Sure, sure. We could post this, absolutely. It's public information.
Thanks.
Okay, you're welcome. One of the other things I wanted to show while I'm here is the average tax rate increase across the state. So right here, I believe we fall into, you know, this area at 1.49. So just to show that we're right around the middle of where everybody else is across the state, I want to say we're falling, you know, in the mid-range. This is something I got yesterday and I wanted to share it. That's all I got.
Just one point that I wanted to clarify is I know that there's been lots of questions regarding the assessed values of homes and assessment letters that recently went out. Can you just confirm to the community that the $578,892 that the district is proposing levying through the taxpayers does not change one cent based upon the assessed values?
Right. So the $578,000 that's being raised for taxes is still spread amongst the residents in the same manner that it would be whether the tax rate was $27 per thousand dollars or $24,000, $24 per thousand. So you're not going to see a change in what you would have paid based on, because when the assessables change, that's when the rate changes, but it still is distributing $578,000 back to taxpayers. It's not going up by more money or less money. It's proportionately changing by the value of the assess, the assessments.
And how many households would that be?
It's about 4,700 households, but it doesn't get divided by 4,700 households. It gets, because you know, it's based on value of your home. And the value of your home is placed on your home by assess, assessment.
Hey, thanks, Jill.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Luft is the, I know this is a, not, it's not a brand new presentation, so I don't know if the numbers are holding on projected number for kindergarten. It shows 111 right now on here.
We haven't changed it. I know as of the end of last week, we're up over 105 already. So actually, the, the conversation has been what is the likelihood that we move beyond the 111? And if so, how high will go? So obviously, we still have several months to register incoming kindergarteners, but I do know we're over 105 students already. So I think it's very likely that we go above the projected 111.
Okay. We're missing our students again. We're hoping that they're busy at the end of the year.
Dominic did reach out to me and apologized for not being able to attend the meeting, but he's got several tests he's studying for. And we're in the midst of the IB assessment and APs and everything else. So they are very busy, but he did reach out to let me know. And I don't think, Ms. Bolino, you didn't get anything from him, did you? Okay.
Well, that's showing response.
Busy home studying.
Good for him. All right. So Dr. Luft, your report.
So I'm going to begin my report with a quick discussion with the board. The discussion will focus on, I would like to recommend, given the fact that the district has two unused snow days and assuming that we do not use those snow days for tornadoes or other events of the past.
Sam, what's up?
Sorry, Sam.
Now you put it out to the universe.
That, that the board consider revising the school district calendar to make Thursday 6/23 and Friday 6/24, so those are the last two days of the school year. Half-day, half instructional days for students at the elementary and the middle school. I think that provides our middle school and elementary school teachers a much-needed time to close out their school year and begin to prepare their classrooms and other timely things that need to be done at the end of the school year. And because of the unused snow days, it gives us a little more flexibility in terms of our instructional hours to be able to make that happen. High school is already in the midst of the regents week, so they, their schedules will not be impacted because students only come in for the assessments they're scheduled to take during that week. So obviously, it's not on the agenda for this meeting, but I did want to have the opportunity to have the discussion and ask any questions.
I just want to say, we just need to give the parents as much communication about that as we can due to work commitments and time off.
Makes sense.
As long as we're hitting our minimum hours that they need to be certified, then it's fine by me.
Okay. So if it's the will of the board, what I could do is I can prepare a communication now and I'll speak to the anticipation of those days becoming half-days. And this way, we could communicate that out with the community prior to the next board meeting. And that'll provide them a couple of weeks of additional notice if that works for everyone.
Yep, that's good.
Okay, thank you very much. So in other news, it has been a couple of weeks of amazing performances. I was able to attend the high school play, the high school musical, which I know was confusing, but very exciting. The way the middle school play does it is they sort of, they cast it in two separate casts. So I attended Friday evening. So I got to see sort of half the students fulfill their roles. And I know those who attended Saturday got a different cast of students, but I'm continually impressed how they did an amazing job. It was nice to see that new space utilized. It's really the first performance we've had in the new social commons there at the middle school. So kudos to everyone involved, from the producers to the musicians. Many of our own staff members are there making it all happen and obviously the amazingly talented students. To the same degree, I was able to attend the high school performance of In the Heights. I was instantly amazed by the, the set and the amount of work that went into constructing the set. And again, I know that although some professionals come in, that much of that work is accomplished by our own students. And then again, huge, amazing performance. I, I just, it sticks with me sort of the round of applause they received at the end. And I know it's been a long time since many of our parents have had the opportunity to be in our buildings and a long time since many have had the opportunity to enjoy a performance like that. But it was just sort of a roar that went across the Performing Arts Center. I know several of you were there with me when it happened. And I just thought it was a perfect way to capture the hard work of our students and the amazing performances that many put into it and just the sheer number of students and that were part of it and new students and new faces that maybe we haven't seen before was something really to be taken. And I hope many had the opportunity to attend one of the three performances. On Sunday, I had the opportunity to attend the girls' and sports event. So many of our students from across the district were able to come and participate in a variety of different sports, softball and cheerleading and track and field, basketball, lacrosse, soccer, really everything they had an opportunity to. Many of our own coaches were here, varsity coaches working with the students and really providing them some exposure, K's, grades K through six, having students have the ability to come. It was a beautiful sunny day. It was well-attended and really everyone enjoyed being there. Along the same lines, I had the opportunity to attend the Magma program before the board meeting. I notice this is the second week in which they've met and many of our special needs students come together, provide an opportunity to partner with mentor teacher, mentor, mentor students from the high schools. Many of our high school students go there and work with these individuals. I have to say, I was very impressed by the number of staff members that were also in attendance there working with the students. And it's really, I think, an important time for the parents of these students to be able to get together and to sort of share experiences and really just enjoy each other's company. So it's something that we deeply missed throughout the pandemic. And I know something that we're really, we're, we're trying to get back up and running now, but I really expect to continue to grow next fall into what was really a hugely successful program here in Putnam Valley for some of our needy students and really an excellent opportunity to get our high school students involved in helping in the community. We also had a speaker come to the high school to speak about the Holocaust. Again, always a very powerful statement. You could hear a pin drop in the room and sharing a really important message for our students. And I think students sort of many naturally made connections to some of the events transpiring across the world right now relating back to, just sort of giving a glimpse of what it must have been like in those times. I also had the opportunity at the elementary school today to see many of our elementary school students attend an assembly. I was talking to a class of second graders as they were waiting in the hallway to enter for the assembly and they were like, what's an assembly? It occurred to me that these second grade students have never been to an assembly in our school. So it was like, wow. So I have to say, everything from tears in faculty members' eyes of how much they've missed this opportunity and seeing the enjoyment on the students' faces and just, it was, it was in celebration of Earth Day and messaging about reuse and recycling. It was, the student participation was amazing. I apologized to some teachers because I'm sure that every, their entire classroom was going to become a drum set when they went back because the performers were using pretty much everything you could think of as a drum. The main drum was a water jug. So I'm pretty sure the drumming continued for the remainder of the day. But it was very nice to see elementary school students in second grade, many of which are attending their first assembly here in Putnam Valley and many more of those to come. In theater works news, information was shared with us. Dr. Misera had invited someone to attend their performance. The individual came from the New York Conservatory for Dramatic Arts and was very impressed with the performance. And just summarizing, 12 of our students were offered scholarships ranging from a $1,000 summer intensive scholarship for eight students to a $15,003, $10,000 scholarships that are available to the students or if they wish to pursue, an associate degree at the New York Conservatory for Dramatic Arts. And they have, as I mentioned, an associate degree program featuring both theater and film. So they were extremely impressed by what they're able to see. And as I had mentioned before, I think everyone in attendance was extremely impressed. And it's nice that this individual recognized the efforts of those students and made these scholarships available if they decide to attend that school. As I had mentioned last meeting, it is the season of events. So I'm just going to quickly highlight some of the upcoming events. Tomorrow evening is the National Honor Society induction, 7:00 PM at the High School PAC. Thursday is the elementary school third grade recorder concert, 7:00 PM. Friday is their middle school talent show. And then next week, it is the week of choruses, I mean of concerts. So we have the middle school fifth and sixth grade chorus concert. We have our elementary school gym show. We have a seventh and eighth grade chorus concert. And then we have our National English Honor Society induction. Our middle school community read event is coming up for, for anyone who's interested in participating, I encourage you to reach out. It's always an exciting event. Many community members have the opportunity to go into classrooms and read a book to some of our students. And I will end my highlights there because that will take me to the next board meeting where I will continue down my list of spring events. That's it.
Can I ask you a quick thing?
Yep.
The middle school, high school musical performance, that was also a lot, first time a lot of the parents and some of the teachers that attended saw the new facility and they were very surprised and very happy to see that. So that was mentioned to me, I don't know about you guys. Also, Janine and I and Jackie Levine and her husband had an opportunity at the, at the show, In the Heights, on Friday night to go backstage during intermission. Jerry Misera had the stage manager Jackie give us a tour. She did an amazing job. It was great to see her passion and like I said, amazing what the set's like, so.
And not just passion, calmness. It's opening night. She knows where everybody is and she's just chit-chatting with us like it's something.
Someone's going like this to her and she's.
Every day. We were doing this. She's like, all right, you know, we're good.
It was only a sophomore.
So, and they offered it. So I was glad we were able to take an opportunity. And I also loved, and obviously the, the scholarships, I want to congratulate Mr. Misera for picking the show. Usually you have one or two stars that are highlighted. There were probably eight or nine students that had a significant solo in the show. The show allowed for spotlighting a lot of people and I just think that's, that was a fabulous choice.
I agree. Okay, on to new business. Item number one.
Resolved on the recommendation superintendent schools to enter into a five-year contract for school years 2022 through 2027 with the Southern Westchester BOSIs in order for the lower, in order for the Lower Hudson Regional Information Center to furnish certain computer services to the district pursuant to education law 1954 JJ for, I'm sorry, both. For, I'm sorry, both parties are in agreement. The terms is presented to the board at this meeting as per document number 18322 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Sharon Twayum to a four, and I apologize if I was even close, to, thank you, to a four-year probationary term as Mandarin teacher commencing on September 1st, 2022, and terminating on August 31st, 2026, in the tenure area of Loth's Language Other Than English at the Middle School on the salary step that is in effect of September 1st, 2022, that is commensurate with the current Step Two of the PVFT salary schedule. Ms. Twayum's Chinese 712 internship certification is pending.
Second. Questions or comments?
I'm impressed that only I could say it that well. As I had mentioned before, Ms. Twayum is here with us this evening, and I do want to recognize that she impressed throughout the interview process. She's not a stranger to Putnam Valley. She's been supporting our elementary and middle school Mandarin programs through our partnership with BOCES for the last several years, as she continued to pursue her education and earn her Mandarin certification, as well as in a pending T-Soul certification that is also coming. So I do want to recognize that she's here this evening and share with the board how impressed everyone was throughout the interview process, and we wholeheartedly recommend her for appointment.
Well, we have to vote first, and then clap.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, yay! Come up, come up, come up.